... meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
Yes, we do. And since resuming in-person meetings, the board secretary no longer reads comments or written communication into the record as we did during remote meetings. Written communication, however, was received and forwarded to board members from Anita Bucio, John Kennedy Farrell, Karen Johnson, Erica Thompson, Heather Sweeney, Michelle Lyle, Angela Sangha Gadsden, Abdul Shakur, Abdel, sorry, Abdel, Patty De La Cruz, Dawn Eddy, and members of the math department, Paulo Roco, Mariana Romano, Laurel O'Sullivan, Kate Mazur, and Betsy Wilson.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Beavis. Okay, next item. Items for information. I think we're going to move the superintendent's report up, so that's going to be the next item that we will have. Dr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Madam President. So at the last meeting, our student board member, Barbara Tomarazzi, really, I thought, did a very effective and eloquent, if you will, job of really explaining an issue and about students' concerns about when they have uneasiness and about reporting it. And Barbara and I already talked once, and so she knows how much I appreciate her bringing that forward and how much it really did alert us to something that we needed to be alerted to. I do also recall that President Savage Williams, you made a comment at the time that we would get back at this meeting, and so we are. And Barbara, you really followed through with what a board member, student board members asked to do, to speak to student issues and to speak, to give voice to student issues. And I just know that we all, as President Savage Williams said at the time, greatly appreciated that. The issue that you brought up, it was an issue with a staff member, and I want to note that we cannot respond publicly to personnel allegations, and Barbara and I discussed that. But I can speak to the process that was followed in that. The issues that were brought up were in the spring of 2021. We were still in the midst of the pandemic, and there were allegations of misconduct against a former employee, and indeed, an investigation was completed at that time. Looking back, we have found that the complainants, students, were interviewed, and those were then involving not only the dean's office, but also involving our human resources office. At that point, the, there wasn't determination made. I can't go into all the personnel issues that were handled at that time, but the employee did return for a summer camp here on the property in the summer. However, in the fall, in September of 2021, the district learned about other allegations involving this employee at a school in Indiana. And at that point, literally, at the moment that ETHS learned of it, the employee was sent off of the property. And subsequently, the employee was placed on leave and has had no contact with our students since that time, since that report in Indiana became public knowledge. We have been reviewing, and thank you, Barbara, for the points that you brought up. We are reviewing that, how it was handled, and we're reviewing what processes could be put in place to make sure that we modify or even improve how that was handled. In my opinion, I believe that ETHS could have done better, and that's why we're looking at the processes to make sure that there are some additional things put in place. But one of the points you made, and you and I talked about it, was the fact that students want to know that they're safe and want to know that they can come forward. In a few minutes, Dr. Kinsey is going to talk to us about student well-being, and she will describe in more detail our acknowledge, care, tell protocols that we really do believe are very important here at ETHS. And it's important for everybody to know that when they have any knowledge of anything that they believe that they're uneasy about or uncomfortable about, they need to not only show care for the other person, but to tell somebody who is in a position to initiate actions. And we will hear more about that from Dr. Kinsey, but I think it's really important to know that our students just must be reassured of that because it is just vital for their protection and for everybody's protection in the school, that we care for one another and that we know that if somebody tells something, they and whoever is involved in that report are going to be cared for. And so thank you for bringing it up. Thank you, President Savage Williams, for wanting to make sure that we followed up on it.
Yes.
And without going into all the personnel details, I can just assure you that this is being closely reexamined and will have an impact on what we do going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. I think, looking forward to continuing to hear about student well-being. And I think Dr. Kinsey is going to come up.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Taya Kinsey, Associate Principal for Student Services. It's good to be with you tonight. We're going to do a brief update in terms of WildKit well-being and thinking about our culture of care. Dr. Witherspoon already referenced a little bit of that, but there are myriad facets to well-being that we know, from the social-emotional end to the physical end, so we're going to address a variety of those. Let's see if I got this going here. There we go. So in terms of tonight, in March, we're going to do our annual Board Goal Two well-being update, or actually, full report. Tonight will be our update. So this is just an opportunity to provide a little bit of update as we reviewed quarter one this year, thinking about last year, thinking about pre-pandemic as well, and reviewing our culture of care, how we're really working to stay WildKit strong, the needs that have been arising, and the services that are in place, as well as the embedding of social-emotional learning. As we think about our journey to be WildKit strong, I really want to take a moment to recognize tremendous need, the tragedy with a shooting in our community that injured four youth, three from ETHS, and killed another young person, and the loss of one of our recent graduates. ETHS is not alone with significant needs of students weighing on staff and our families and our community and weighing on students. Our mental health needs have increased throughout our nation for adolescents, and yet ETHS continues to be special in many ways, and one of them is the ways we're committed to prevent, intervene, and support each other through crises. Our crisis care team and our entire school community continues to work together to support each other, even when it feels like so much. We name that, and we keep supporting each other and students. So we want to walk a little bit through services and needs. Increased needs. These numbers are very startling, and yet, for some people, they said they knew that there would be needs coming out of the pandemic and into in-person while still in the pandemic. So as we reflect on first quarter from fall 2019, pre-pandemic, to fall 2021 this year, one of the things we've seen is a significant increase in suicide risk assessments, with an increase of 100%. One of the things that we're aware of is not only does the also-increased psychiatric hospitalizations of 50% demonstrate significant needs and complicated situations for each individual student, but it also reflects a commitment of our staff to quickly identify and get students the services they need in that moment, as well as continue to support them through care, even through psychiatric hospitalizations. The coordination of care is one that, this is not just a moment in time. It means a commitment to students in an ongoing way, which requires significant staffing, and we've been really proud of the many ways our entire teams are supporting. When we think about our journey, one of the things that has been talked a lot about in terms of mental health is, it is okay not to be okay. And then we must tell someone. We can't simply end it with, it's okay to not be okay, because you can't be alone through that. You know, Dr. Witherspoon often says it's a great day to be a WildKit, and I agree that it is a great day to be a WildKit, but I also recognize that sometimes, for some students, it doesn't feel like it. And so we want to pay attention to that, whether we are angry, or sad, or depressed, or anxious, or WildKits might feel alone. We know that as WildKits, we're here to care for each other as an entire community, and each of us has a next step to get help for ourselves or help for someone else. Our students do have done a tremendous job. Dr. Witherspoon mentioned Acknowledge Care Tell. One of the processes that we've engaged in is really messaging from a school-wide, community perspective, the process of Acknowledge Care Tell, which is, kind of simply said, acknowledging when there's a concern, and we'll go into more detail about that, showing that we care and telling someone so no one ever holds that as a burden to themselves. It was done, developed in concert with students to replace any mentality of either don't snitch or keeping secrets. So when anyone has concerns about self-harm, harm to others, or incidents of having been harmed, we want students to share that. And Barbara, you did a great job of illustrating that, lifting up, we want to share when concerns arise so that they're not left unaddressed and that everyone can feel safe and supported. The online incident reporting forum is another way that we have created vehicles with student committees to find that opportunity to better access to reporting concerns, including harassment or situations of potential harm. As we think about the many ways that there are services and the response to needs and with families and students, the steps we are taking are really in alignment with the surgeon general. Many of you may have seen an article that just even came out as recently as last week from the surgeon general, speaking to the devastated, devastating impact that the pandemic has had on mental health for youth. And they noted the myriad ways that schools can address this, and we're really proud of the fact that there are so many ways, of all those lists and different categories that ETHS is engaging in, and yet, that's not enough. We're doing more. So we're really working to make sure that we are attending to each student's needs, that all the staff, and not just the mental health providers, are feeling supported in how can we help students through. So here's a few examples, and you can see everything from our family, our student and family evening programs, from cultivating resilience, addressing bullying, sexual assault and harassment and prevention. Our actually, next family talk series is going to be in early January with another evening of suicide prevention discussion with students and families. So there's a variety of ways that we're just working to engage students and families to address anxiety, depression, and the impact on mental health and on academics. Just another highlight of a few pieces of well-being services, there are so many actions that are being taken. Our crisis care team unfortunately was busy a lot over the last several weeks, including this weekend, providing grief support, planning out crisis support. Group and individual mental health services have continued, and so those are some, a few pieces. And then we've continued to expand our mindfulness focus. Rebel Human was a group who's been supporting us for a while, but we've also incorporated Black Brown and Breathing, both for families, for students, and for staff, and continuing to look at all the supports that we have in place. So we want to continue to focus on how we can address those. As we're thinking about embedding SEL, we've increased our resources and our focus on professional development. One of the areas that even the surgeon general had noted in their 53-page report on mental health in the schools was the importance of embedding social-emotional learning in the classrooms. And that includes mindfulness, but is not isolated simply to mindfulness. So that's been an area that we've really continued to work on supporting staff with, as well as including in our curriculum. Our PE and wellness emotion intervention for all students includes monitoring. It also includes skill building and emotion and regulation, because we want to be able to identify our emotions, something I'm working on every day still, as well as continue to regulate them all the time. Our science of suicide prevention, we're continuing to work on, as well as thinking about social-emotional learning in myriad ways that we touch students' lives, but including through FASH and ZASH. And one thing that we're doing is, in addition to continuing our student well-being surveys, both in the short term as well as our larger survey that we hold in the winter, is a staff well-being survey, and so we're continuing to look at that. Understanding that well-being also includes the physical, wanted to give a brief update on our COVID responses and our steps taken. You can see, we have a link here to our COVID response webpage, because our staff and students, definitely, we all continue to follow our guidance, IDPH, ISV, CDC, Evanston Health Department, as well as our medical advisory board. And we really try, not try, we do, provide transparency with our COVID response page, and that's what's linked here. It details our processes, our definitions of things, including close contacts, and our weekly dashboard updates. Some people have asked, are the dashboard updated daily? No, it's weekly so that we can focus on supporting our students. But we also recognize that nationwide, we've seen increases in COVID. And you can see that while our numbers on our dashboard are really amazingly low, you can also see that, and I should include, Evanston has a, at least as of last week, had a 1.85 positivity rate. We have seen an increase at ETHS in COVID positive numbers in the last week, following travel and gatherings, which you can see on our dashboard as we had updated on Friday. That's our regular update time. We know that students and families and staff are definitely talking about these increases. I've gotten inquiries if we've all been working. But we're working to stay really in close communication with health experts and monitoring this daily. As the focus of, all of us want to continue to stay safe, and there's many ways that we emphasize doing that. One of them is staying home with any symptoms to keep all of us safe, students, staff, all of us. We also are always emphasizing our proper mask wearing and consistent mask wearing, our sanitizing, our COVID testing through S.H.I.E.L.D. that we are continuing as part of our culture of care. And as we think about COVID testing, we are continuing to revisit our COVID testing strategy, and we're going to continue to be adaptable as we just constantly revisit what are our next steps. We also want to emphasize, and you can see here, that in terms of vaccination, our proof of vaccination should for students has increased to 93%, and our staff are at 94%. Just as a reminder, as we consider, you know, our whole community coming together, we want to build connections, we want to build resilience, and we also know that sometimes we have to take action to ensure that everyone feels safe. So Acknowledge Care Tell is really about our entire community. It's something we ask students to do, but it's something we ask our staff and all members of our school community. And I've been constantly impressed by how students come forward and families. We get reach outs from parents who are concerned about another student, not even their own, who reach out to say, how can we help? What can we do? I'm concerned this has been said. So we get, it's tremendous the way our entire community shows this care, and we know that the culture of care is already strong. But every day, we have students who step forward, whether it's about themselves or about caring for others, whether that's around self-harm or areas of concern. So we want to continue to practice that, and I can't underestimate the importance of our hotlines and our lifelines. So we really wanted to include a reminder to everyone, make sure we get connected with supports for prevention, and that includes through lifelines, the National Suicide Prevention Hotline Lifeline, our National Sexual Assault Hotline, and our Trevor Lifeline, specifically for crisis support for LGBTQU. That concludes our brief update as we think about myriad ways we're working to support both the needs and all of our staff as well. So thank you for allowing me to join you for a quick update, and happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions? Pat?
Thanks, Taya. Always appreciate your work and your presentations. Some of this was embedded, but can you talk a little bit more about the proactive kinds of things that we're doing? Because I think what we're discovering, I mean, obviously, certain students are raising, or people are coming to this significant level of concern, but I think there's a lot of bubbling, you know, under the surface, and I'm just wondering what you're doing in that area. And as I always ask, do you need more help in doing that? Because I, you know, I feel like we can't have enough social workers and people with your training. So maybe you can talk about both those things. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So as we think about kind of the prevention perspective, there are so many ways that we're focused on prevention. Talking about embedding social-emotional learning really takes us beyond some of the more kind of very focused curricular perspectives around skill building and helps us think about, how am I learning in math to navigate problem solving, or, you know, begin to engage in coping and problem solving that way? So supporting teachers and thinking about their area of expertise, but also embedding it and infusing it into daily interaction is something teachers at ETHS have, are even doing in so many ways, and yet, are naming it now in different ways. So many teachers are incorporating mindfulness into their classes, are using some of the videos that have been made accessible, whether that's through Black Brown and Breathing or through Rebel Human, utilizing opportunities for our mindfulness studio. And so thinking about it that way within the classroom are just some examples. Our curricular perspectives, specifically around in PE and wellness, are for all students, and that is really a tier-one perspective, and that's not a, just this week, we're talking about mental health. That's throughout the school year. And I just really have to say, all of our teachers are amazing, but our PE and wellness department has fully committed to this. And so they've been working specifically with Dr. Rosick, who has been acting for our process of emotion identification and regulation. And so many students have already given feedback of, thank you for giving me the opportunity to practice these skills and then go back to them. So this isn't, oh, we're just going to address this in September, welcome back to school. This is, how are you continuing to apply this? So these are skill-building opportunities throughout the year, as well as checks for, how are you using this? And students have given some really amazing feedback, even in written form, which I'd be happy to share with you, probably in March. But it's really a phenomenal opportunity for students when it's a little bit more of a focused kind of curricular, but embedding it again kind of within, as opposed to just a one-stop-shop or one-mic-drop moment. So those are some of our examples. But we spend time talking about this in the same way that we focus on equity and access, and we center that all the time. We really work to focus on, how are we building in social-emotional learning all the time? Not just as a, I'm checking a box, in the same way that we were really committed to equity in all of our conversations. So the, some of the ways that we have done that have to do with increasing that focus even in presentations, even in evening events. So we've, as you can note from some of the themes, but also, how are we checking in with each other as staff members? How are we clawing to do that even in a meeting? So we're working on improving the mirroring from a positive parallel process as well. Those are a few examples.
Other questions?
Yeah. I think, thank you, Taya, for this. Before I jump into my question, your report is so important all the time, so I wanted to definitely thank you for that. But Pat definitely does ask the question, do you need more? So I guess my question is, how have we leveled up? You know, your first slide shared the assessment, the risk assessment. And so, again, how are we prepared to meet our students where they're at and where they need us to be so that we can support them in all the ways that you just outlined? This is my, I guess it's my expectation that we're doing, I know we're doing things differently, but how have we prepared for that and what have we done?
Thank you. So I, one of the ways that the board and the school has supported the focus on mental health is by, two years ago, adding social work, two social work positions. I'm honestly not certain how we would have gotten through this fall without the additional social work positions, and even with the additional social work positions, staff are stretched. And that, and I know that ETHS is no exception, right? I talked to every other school nearby and friends nationwide in schools. We know that we're consistent in that experience, and we often talk about, how can we be on this marathon for the entire year at the pace and the level of need? And so it is an ongoing conversation of, how can we create sustainability for our staff? And so we're definitely continuing to assess what level of need and how, the level of care that is required, and how can we sustain that? That's my best diplomatic answer of, yep, we're stretched.
Yeah. You know, I'll dig deeper, but yeah.
There's an intensity
Right.
that has grown and that existed pre-pandemic
Right.
that has only increased. So staff absolutely feel that, and mental health providers aren't alone in feeling that, right? Our secretaries hold space for students. Our teachers hold space for students. It's tremendous. It's one of the things I love about this building that, and this It's one of the things I love about this building that, and this community of how we develop relationships and show care. So it means that there is, there are significant stressors, particularly for mental health providers, but absolutely for others. And so in answer to your question, yes, we are continuing to assess what is the level of need for our staffing, but sincerely also for the sustainability of everyone.
Well, and Ty, I would just kind of jump back into this, that I understand it's the middle of the year and I, you know, I respect our budgeting and everything, but I think, I think I said this earlier, if you need something at the wrong time, you still need to ask for it and you still need to get it. So I think we're in a place, and like you, just the stories I hear from colleagues and friends around the country, we are not alone. But I think we are unique in that we've always, this has been important to us for a long time and we've recognized it in a deeper way. So let's not lose that now. When, I mean, those numbers of 100% increase in our suicide prevention and 50% increase in our hospitalizations, that's, they're telling, these kids are telling us something. So I just want you to know that if you need something at the wrong time, don't worry about that. We want you to get what you need and get what you need for your colleagues because we know how hard they're working and how their jobs have grown and changed so much in the last two years. And they have their own stress when they leave here. So really, I don't, I really want you to think about that and, you know, come to us if that makes sense or whatever the process is. But this is really important and I know you know that, but you've got, I want you to know that, I think I can speak for most of us here, that you have our support to do what you need to do to, you know, do your work.
I just want to say thank you because as someone who, really, I feel like I advocate for a living around students, right, around staff needs. And so just having the support sincerely means so much, even if I'm trying to be diplomatic at the same time. So thank you sincerely. I didn't want to cut anybody off.
Thank you, Pat. Well started.
Good question. Thanks again, Taya. I love all the support you're offering our students, especially around the social emotional stuff. But to get to the physical side of things and COVID testing, could you elaborate a little bit on S.H.I.E.L.D. testing? And in particular, for that tiny little number of unvaccinated students and staff that we have, are they getting tested regularly? And do the already vaccinated but still possibly subject to breakthrough cases, people also have the opportunity to get tested if they so desire?
Sure. So in terms of our current, yes, and it's a tiny number of, you know, students now at this point, including staff. But in terms of our students who engage in S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, I've been really impressed with the consistency of, you know, what turned out to be smaller numbers. As you all recall, even when I was here this fall, we didn't have that level of proof of vaccination and our community has really come forward. Our nurse's office and our new contact tracer in our nurse's office, as you know, is finally fully staffed. Amazing, thank you. And, and yet, you know, again, feeling the pull from every direction. Taya's glad she's not doing as much contact tracing though. So in terms of contact tracing, we are working with S.H.I.E.L.D., so should anything yield the additional information. But our S.H.I.E.L.D. weekly testing is specifically at this time dedicated to our unvaccinated students for that consistency. And I've been, you know, we've all gotten to know the students who come through and providing that support. And we are looking at continuing to explore ways that we might expand that and review what is our current position for S.H.I.E.L.D. testing and addressing both vaccinated and unvaccinated.
So right now, the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing is, our unvaccinated students are regularly using that? Is that pretty much
Correct.
All of that small, small number?
Correct.
And then how about unvaccinated staff? Are they also doing the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing?
So our unvaccinated staff are able to utilize opportunities outside of the school. At this time, we're not providing that as an opportunity. You had also asked about testing for vaccinated students. And while S.H.I.E.L.D. at this time isn't providing that on our weekly, we provide a lot of opportunities, including through our school-based health center, who's been an amazing partner throughout. So we do a lot of collaboration in that way to ensure that there's that consistency of opportunity for students.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's been a complaint about the United States in general, that we don't do enough testing as compared to many of the European countries, for example. And so that's kind of allowing some of the breakthrough cases. That seems important. But I'm sorry, just to get back to the staff and to clarify that.
Can I clarify that though a little bit, Ms. Livingston?
Sure, sure.
But unvaccinated staff is required, they are required to get tested every week.
Okay, that's, I just wasn't hearing that. Thank you.
And they give us proof of testing every week.
And that's what I thought was happening. They're just not, not doing it here.
Not done at ETHS, correct. And that's per the state requirement. And we've been consistent with that.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are plenty of places within the community where that can happen. So I just want to ask just very quickly, just because I want to make sure people understand some of the terms you use, like tier one intervention and black, brown, and breathing. And, you know, just can you talk just very generally about some of these interventions that are available for everybody and how students can access them?
Absolutely. So when we talk about tier one interventions, tier one are really opportunities for all students. And that might be in classrooms such as, right, our emotion identification and regulation skill building opportunities and then self-assessments for how are they doing that? How is that working? Those are tier one opportunities because it means all students. It encompasses everyone within a classroom setting. And then we have other opportunities that kind of would be considered tier one, where we invite all students to engage in, you know, Rebel Human. We still have even our virtual mindfulness we have online. And so we have these different opportunities, our mindfulness studio, we have these myriad pieces, and then we have Black Brown and Breathing, which is another amazing opportunity for really being present and engaging in mindfulness in a space where, you know, students have really gathered, students of color have gathered together and the turnout has been phenomenal and so well received. And so finding that opportunity has been really positive. And hosting an evening event for staff as well as for families, those, so we've had multiple events throughout the fall thus far. And it's really, the feedback I've heard is just such an opportunity for being with others and holding that space for others and supporting others, but also feeling supported and understood. So it's a great opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Really important information, very, very key report. And we knew coming into this school year, how important student wellbeing is and continues to be for us. So, so thank you for the report and I just really appreciate the update. And as Pat said, if you find that there's more, more resources than you have or needed, come back and let us know that because this is a priority. Thank you. Okay, we have another report. Dr. Davis is going to lead the next one. It's going to be an update on our school report card.
And while we're transitioning, I'll just mention that the number one resource we could use is to clone Dr. Kinsey. I cannot begin to tell you, everybody at ETHS sees it, what she is doing and her leadership and her just constant work on these issues. And Taya, I want to be sure that I acknowledge that. And we need to be careful about your wellbeing.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Yep. This always means staff as well as students. All right. Dr. Levy and Dr. Davis.
All right. Well, as promised, we are here with an update and have a new clicker, so bear with me. There we go. We promised that we would come back when the report card score, report card had its second release and the second release includes test data, particularly SAT, state mandated testing. So first thing I want to say is that we really have to put this in perspective, especially at ETHS, but around the state and around the country. But at ETHS, it was unique, this testing. The state required SAT test last school year. Our students took that under extremely difficult circumstances. Actually, it was the first time our students returned in person to classrooms at ETHS during the instructional day. That was the first time they had been in the building in over a year. It was also the first day that our teachers and staff came in to support our students in that way. Those students attended class remotely for over a year. It was also the first time that everyone had to experience our COVID safety protocols. So experiencing COVID safety protocols in a standardized testing environment is difficult enough. Having that be your first experience at the high school in over a year makes that doubly difficult. This was not a typical standardized test administration. That said, 89% of our juniors tested. And I just want to have one caveat here before I jump into the details. The SAT represents a single data point in this case. It should not be used as a proxy for the impact of COVID-19, the effectiveness of enhanced e-learning, or really anything but a marker of where our students were in April of last school year. The data in this report uses ISB benchmark cut scores and not SAT college readiness benchmarks. ISB benchmark cut scores are set at a higher threshold than SAT college readiness benchmarks. In Illinois, I've said this in the past, but in Illinois, it is possible to be college-ready but not meet state benchmarks. To that, we will not be reporting SAT college readiness benchmarks in this report because that would be confusing. As reported in the Chicago Tribune, they ran this article and you'll find out that 33.4% of students in reading in the state of Illinois met or exceeded the benchmark of three or four, that's the state benchmark, it's a meter exceeds in reading. And in math, it was 29.6. I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about scattergrams. I know everyone's very excited to look at scattergrams. But I think they do tell a story. And what they do is, and I have each of these blown up on a slide, but what they're going to do is they're going to say, they're really going to speak to how well ETHS students did relative to other schools in Illinois. We don't often compare ourselves to other schools. We often look internally and we'll do that tonight. But I think it's important to ground the conversation externally as well, given the circumstances. So here you see the English Language Arts Meet Succeeds comparisons. And you see ETHS is that blue box and that blue box is on the orange line. That orange line is the line that imagines if your 2019 SAT results were the same as your 2021 SAT results as a school. And you will see that for English Language Arts, we are right on that line. That means that our students scored the same, they met the same benchmark in the same proportion in 2019 as they did in 2021. They did not take the test in 2020. We were shut down. The whole state was shut down. You'll also notice that the vast majority of schools are underneath that orange line. So again, relative to other districts, this tells us how our school compares. You'll notice in the upper right-hand quadrant, those schools are, I de-identified the data for a reason, but I was asked, what are those schools? For, the first four are magnet schools. And then you see, then there are some other very extraordinarily well-resourced schools in Illinois to the north of us. I'm going to leave it at that. But really, if you look at that, it really says that our students did comparable to previous years and very well compared to other schools in the state. Let's look at, this is, and these charts were not developed by me. I can't take credit for them. They were developed by the curriculum and assessment directors of Cook County, CATCA. They have a working group, Carrie's a member. I'm a member. And what they did was they looked at the entire state dataset and developed these out. So they're looking at the all schools in Illinois. And here you see, it looks at the impact of income, low income designations in terms of how well a school performs. And the, you'll see there's a regression line there and that curve really tells us what the line of like best fit. So it's, so it says essentially, the less low-income students you have, the better your test results. And if you were, all things being equal, you would be on that line. If you're above that curve, then you're doing quite well. And you see that ETHS is well represented in that chart, doing better than would be predicted. Here we see math. This again looks at 2019 scores compared to 2021 scores. You'll notice that we are just below the orange line. We are not on the orange line, we're the blue box. But relative to other schools, we are far, we are fairly close to that line, which tells us that the quote-unquote "learning loss" or whatever we're measuring loss, right, from regular year to wherever we are now, really tells us that we're very close to where we were for that group. And again, at the top, you have the same designation of schools. You have the magnet schools in Chicago, Northside Prep, Walter Payton, Whitney Young, and then you have other well-resourced schools above that. And here you see the same line, which looks at low income and really says, you know, line of best fit for that. And again, we are above the curve in that regard. This in no way talks about how well our students are doing here at ETHS. This is simply a comparison point and should be taken as such that during a pandemic, and let's call it what it is, a pandemic, here's where our students, how well they perform. So now there's a series of charts pulled from the school report card. School report card is interactive. I couldn't make it interactive on these charts, but if you go in, you can start clicking around. And you will see that 89% of juniors participated in the SAT. And you see the participation by subgroup. What I did was I just set it up for subgroup and that's what it put out. Carrie, are there any observations around the percentage of juniors tested?
Looks pretty consistent.
Okay. You have your ELA results are consistent with 2019 and there is variation by subgroup. Again, we're looking at the English Language Arts Meet Succeeds. Now we'll walk us through that information. That's 53% of our students met or exceeded the standard, the benchmark in ELA comparable to 2019. We see variation by subgroup. 77% of white students met or exceeded in English Language Arts. 19% of our black students met or exceeded. 29% of our Hispanic students met or exceeded. These designations are state designations on the report card. 19% of our low-income students met or exceeded. Students with IEPs are broken out on the school report card, 17% met or exceeded. And you see students with disabilities. That means in state parlance, that is students with 504s. 42%. And you can see on the chart that that's up in terms of the students that met or exceeded in that subgroup compared to 2019. Math results show a slight decrease. We saw that when we looked at the scattergram. There is variation by subgroup. 67% of white students met or exceeded standards last year. Sixty-seven percent of white students met or exceeded standards last year. Sixteen percent of black students met or exceeded standards. Our Hispanic students, thirty-one percent, their scores went up. You can see on the chart, it looks like they went up. Seventeen percent of low-income students met or exceeded in mathematics. Twelve percent of students with IEPs. Thirty-four percent of students with disabilities. Again, that's the 504 designation by the state. And you see that that number is up, the percentage of students met or exceeding compared to Our teachers continue to rise to the challenge of the pandemic in educating our students and our current seniors performed well relative to their peers in other districts. We are committed to monitoring student progress, not just standardized test scores. Standardized test scores are helpful to a certain extent. They give you a temperature check, but really we're looking at other achievement data as well, grade distributions. We're looking at, you know, in talking to teachers, the modifications that need to happen in the curriculum. We know that teachers are spending more time this school year, going back over concepts that in a typical year would have been taught the year before, so we're spending time on that. But again, we're looking at that kind of data, that kind of information to make adjustments to curriculum instruction. This year, for the first time in a long time, we're going to start building a dataset, the PSAT eight-nine for freshmen, the PSAT ten for sophomores, and the SAT for eleventh graders. This dataset will be particularly important to monitor in the years to come as we really wrestle with the impact of the pandemic on academic achievement. It's one thing to say juniors, right, after they've had freshman year, after they've had, you know, all the way through eighth grade. They came to the high school as freshmen, they had a full freshman year, they had three-quarters of a sophomore year, and then they were out. And then, you know, then they came back, you know, now they're back, they're seniors, they did well. It'll be interesting to monitor the students who did not have a traditional transition to the high school, talking about current sophomores who weren't here at all freshman year, and also looking at that current junior class. But we're tracking all of it and we really, really need to. I think I just have a couple more concluding comments to make. So again, it's not a proxy for well-being. Please let's not confuse this with a proxy for the kids are all right. That's not what this is. I think it's accurate to say our teachers continue to rise to the occasion. Our seniors did well relative to others. We're committed to monitoring progress and we're really going to dig down and address that variation by subgroup because there are some achievement disparities that have been exacerbated clearly using this marker, which also could be a proxy for how, you know, COVID disproportionately impact different subgroups at Evanston. So open to questions, concerns, comments. We have another update. We'll have another update a few months from now when we have the third, is it the third release?
End of April.
End of April, we'll have the third release of the school report card and we'll have some more robust comparison data with the state at that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Betas. Questions from the board? This is really interesting. As you were talking, I was imagining and thinking even about a year ago, how stressed we all were as we were going to winter break and coming back from Thanksgiving and the rising numbers. We didn't have a vaccine at the time and I just can't imagine coming back to school and the first thing you do is take this really heavy-duty task.
I would like to acknowledge Carrie and her team for orchestrating that. That was a real heavy lift.
Yes.
All of our teachers and staff contributed to that, but Carrie's team coordinated that. It was the first time we used every, pretty much every room in the school because of spacing constraints at the time were utilized, along with all of the COVID restrictions we had in place.
Our staff is amazing and everyone leaned in and got it done safely.
Great. Thank you. And I also am just remembering how weird things felt with all that social distancing and, you know, the hallways and then, so now then they take a test in a room that's different with social distancing and it just, I just wondered really what those numbers really mean. So looking forward to the next iteration of scores. Board, any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. And now we have Dr. Kenzie coming up and Dr. Robinson.
I am Keith Robinson, Associate Principal for Educational Services. I have with me Dr. Levy and Dr. Kenzie as we're happy to report an update on our SRO student survey and just kind of the process.
So I think we wanted to start by just kind of framing our beginnings of this process that actually has encompassed a year. And I had the opportunity to support the discipline committee after you all, you know, helped us move forward with really considering the role of the SRO at ETHS. And I know while we're here specifically to talk about the SRO survey, we wanted to do a little framing of the experience in our process. So our discipline committee is very large committee comprised of community members, board members, obviously, administrators, social workers, psychologists, teachers, safety personnel, deans, et cetera. So we're glad that we have such a great representation. And when we began to work with the discipline committee and really starting to ask ourselves some questions around what questions exist, right, as we seek to understand SROs and their role at ETHS, what concerns exist? And specifically, how do we gather the facts so that we can have the answers to some of these questions accurately? How can we engage in an organic way? What specific information do we want to gather? And how, in the midst of all of this, are we centering equity as we have these conversations? And so we were really happy to have hard conversations, meaningful conversations. And a lot of this in our experience, and I think Dr. Robinson is going to walk us a little bit more down this timeline, is as we discovered, this was not going to be a one or two committee conversation for us to really dig deep. And so we then decided we are going to break off into a subcommittee so that we could continue to address. The majority of the actual discipline committee chose to be part of the subcommittee and that was the high level of commitment that existed. It meant for robust conversations. It meant that we were on Zoom doing breakouts of how we're identifying all of the impact and the consideration. So we really appreciated it as an organic process that grew both in terms of our desire to gather survey information, gather qualitative information, but understand it from each other as well.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Kenzie. And she did a great job with beginning to frame, you know, the why that we're doing this. And I got to say, it was a pretty intense exercise. I think it was an exercise that we needed to do and it was a very collaborative one and extremely transparent. Dr. Kenzie mentioned the teachers, community members, representation from the board, staff members, safety department, who really were critical with providing information, meaningful information, to really understand just what was needed to really get a better understanding of the impact and the intent of our SRO program. So we met initially and then we met again and again and again. And what was interesting is there were a lot of people really leaning in that were interested in the topic and designing what we thought would be the best way to get the most information to gather for you to determine next steps. So a part of that was really coming up and creating a survey for students, for staff, guardians, and parents. And another piece was really bringing in multiple perspectives of SROs, both looking at the local and national levels. We also invited community partners, the Moran Center, who did an amazing, well-researched presentation. We also had the chief, Police Chief Cook, who gave us a great presentation. And finally, the missing voice was our own voice of our own local SRO, Mr. Loy Spels, who really gave an update with our local way that we had the SROs. So what you're going to hear tonight is a synthesis of all of that effort from the survey data to the voices of our SRO, the voices of our community, which is synthesizing this data. And we're happy to have Dr. Levy here to walk us through a lot of them. In the end, we're happy to answer any question about the process and any information that you'll see in the report.
All right. So I'm going to provide highlights from the surveys. So timeline of the surveys in May 2021, spring, so we were hybrid. We did a start student survey and we had sixty-nine percent of our students completed this survey. And then we shared findings with the committee. And then when the school year started this year, we had talked about, the committee had talked about the need to survey staff and get feedback from parent guardians just at the time of the year. There was no time to do it, so we picked back up in the fall. And I will say, I appreciate the committee and all the feedback and the collaboration from the committee members in looking at and helping develop this survey and helping guide the questions that were really important for them. So we sent it in October. We had staff, about a quarter of staff took the survey, hundred-and-forty-six staff member responses. And then we sent it out to the parent guardians at that time too, and we have a hundred-and-eighty-nine responses. So when I present the results, you know, for the next several slides, and I talk about the parent guardians, I will refer to it as the parent guardians that chose to respond to the survey. So this is not generalizable. It represents equivalent of about five percent of our school population. So it's a very low response rate. It's not generalizable, but it is a voice and that we're sharing of those that took the survey. So I just provided some context. Compared to our opening of school enrollment numbers beginning of the year, the students that responded by grade and of the parent guardians that responded, so pretty much equally distributed across grades. And then by race ethnicity, so our students, it's pretty, since we had such a large response for our students, about two-thirds, it's pretty close in alignment to our student population. The parent guardian, again, a hundred-and-eighty-nine parent guardians that responded and it's sixty percent white, so it's a majority white. So it's not equally distributed across our, it is not aligned with our overall population, our demographic population. And then our staff, we sent out to all staff, so two-thirds, mostly our licensed staff and about twenty-seven percent of our non-licensed staff and then administration took it. So we asked some of the questions and the highlights were, one of the first questions is, before taking the survey, how aware were you of the role of ETHS SRO? So we had a scale of zero to one hundred, where zero is not at all aware and a hundred is extremely aware. And it was a sliding scale. And so this is the mean where our responses lie. So our staff, most aware, students were kind of in the middle. And as they go through, and I'll mention as we go through, as we look through the survey and what we learned from the student responses and from the open-ended comments is they really had a hard time pulling apart the safety staff and the SRO, even though in the very beginning of the student survey, we clearly explained the difference between SRO and safety, that they're not part of safety, some history of it. These surveys were administered through their PE wellness, they, you know, read that introduction and explanation too. And one of the things we learned is they just had a hard time pulling that apart. Not all of them, but there was a lot of confusion between safety and SRO. And I think this is an important point as we kind of look through some of these. So we had a question to ask, to what extent do you think an SRO would protect from an internal threat? And then the next slide will have an external threat. My glasses are fogging, so it's hard to read that far. About half, just over half, reported frequently or almost always that they felt an SRO would protect from an internal and external. And then, and from an internal. And then for the external, it's pretty similar responses, about half slightly under for our students and then those parent guardians that responded said frequently, almost always. And then over a third said once in a while, sometimes. And then we had some questions asked around the kind of the general feelings towards the SRO. So the students asked how they felt when they saw SRO inside ETHS and we did a word cloud with the words. So the larger the word, the more frequently it was cited in the student responses. Again, they're saying their large words are like safe, find a different nervous secure comp. But as we had several open-ended comments, it really was clear that some of these are having a hard time in pulling apart safety versus the two SROs in the building. Staff, we asked staff the same question, how do you feel when you saw SROs in the building? And these are their responses. The most frequently cited one was safe and then we can see others. And then we had scenarios where we asked how they would feel towards the SRO. So we asked them, how would you feel if the SROs at ETHS wore a police uniform? And so we asked, and this question is in all of the three different surveys. So staff are, majority about forty percent are sort of neutral. Across the board, staff, students are mostly neutral, another forty percent of students that somewhat are much more uncomfortable. And then the parent guards that responded, it's kind of distributed across the three.
So I'm just going to add, for this one and the next several, it was important for the committee to really think, engage, what if there were some changes? You know, what would that look like? And this was one of the questions, what if they wore police uniforms? And you'll see some of the other ones. I just wanted to provide that context.
Thank you. Like Ricky's saying, my doctor's saying, what if they wore traditional plain clothes? Right? And so again, there's a half, just on a half, that's saying neutral, not at all, they wouldn't feel at all different. And then this one is kind of sort of balanced on the ends between somewhat uncomfortable versus comfortable. Another question was, how would you feel if they concealed their weapon? And we have about a quarter to a third saying more comfortable, about fifteen, under twenty percent saying more uncomfortable, and then a third, a little over a third with saying neutral. And how would you feel if they made their weapon more visible? Students over half said they would be more uncomfortable, staff, a higher portion, then say more uncomfortable, same with the parent guardians that responded. And then about a quarter, a little over a quarter, saying neutral, and then a smaller ten percent, a little over, saying more comfortable. And then we asked, how would you feel if they were not present in the building? So uncomfortable, more uncomfortable, about forty-seven percent of staff reported that. A third of the students said they would be more uncomfortable and a little over half of the parent guardians that responded, so they would be more uncomfortable. Half, about forty-five percent of students were neutral to that and then about ten, twelve Half, about 45% of the students were neutral to that, and then about 10, 12% across the board, across the groups were saying 15% are more comfortable. And then, how would you feel if they were present in the building more often? And so half of the students reported neutral, and then it was sort of split between the two ends, comfortable versus uncomfortable. A third, again, of staff were neutral, and a third are more comfortable. And then with the parent guardians that responded, then just under half, 46% were saying, are reporting they would be more comfortable. And then, I think this was the last one on this series, was how would you feel if they were more visible outside on campus grounds before, after and during the school day? The level of comfort. So students, again, half are neutral, a third would be more comfortable. With the staff, about 40% would be more comfortable, and just over a quarter are neutral. And then with those parent guardians that responded, just over half would be more comfortable. And then we had some questions asked about their relationship with the SRO. Have we asked students, have you personally had any interaction with an SRO at ETHS? Students and staff. And 50% of staff said yes. Majority of the students, almost 75% said no. And then we asked, how would you relate your, rate your relationship with SROs in the building? Staff, 42%, almost had a positive, varied somewhat positive. And then just over a third reported neutral and no relationship. With students, it was 73% almost that reported neutral to no relationship. And we had a question about, what do you think the role of an SRO at ETHS should be for staff and the parent guardians? So staff primarily say to protect students and staff from internal, external threats. And then two-thirds also reported participate in community programs. We had response for students, support students for mentoring programs. That was over half, and then over half of the staff that took the survey reported participate in restorative justice methods. And then the responses are for the parent guardians that took the survey. And then our, at the end of the surveys, we had a question about the likelihood of dangerous events. So we asked them on a scale of zero to 100, with zero being very unlikely and 100 being very likely, how likely do you think the following is a dangerous violent event in the Emerson community? So staff and parent, the parents that responded to the survey and the staff, their responses are very similar to both of these, an event in the community or event at ETHS. And then, so they're on the higher end. And then the students, with the lower half are just, you know, kind of in the middle for an event at ETHS. But then the students are lower for both of these compared to the staff and those parents that responded. And then we had, in the event, we have an active shooter at ETHS. How safe would you feel? Again, on the scale of zero to 100, it was a sliding scale, they could report not at all safe to very safe. And, and staff and those parent guardians that responded were similar in kind of along the 69 to 72% range that there was on the safe, the safety scale, and then lower if there was no uniform SRO onsite to respond. This question was different when we asked students. It was an open-ended question. And the, the student survey was the one that was given first, so we had asked the students and we used their words and it made a word cloud. So in the event, we have an active shooter at ETHS. How would you feel if there was no uniform SRO onsite to respond? And this was the response from the students. When we looked at the survey, when the committee looked at the survey in the fall, that's when we changed it to a scale instead of, from this open-ended for students. So just some of the challenges that had made analyzing and interpreting these responses a little difficult is the students, definitely based on the analysis of the open-ended comments. And for the 25, over 2,500 students that responded, a large portion provided open-ended feedback. They really took the survey and they responded with their thoughts. So from looking through those, it's clear that there were many that were confused of safety staff at ETHS with the SRO. So that made it difficult to make any generalizations out of it, some of the findings. And then the parent guardians was just an extremely small number. So just with caution about how those responses are interpreted and used, they are not generalizable to a larger parent guardian population. So I just encourage them to say, parents said this, the parents did not say this, the parents that took the survey stated this. The researcher in me is cautious. Okay, so any questions for any of us?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for presenting all that information. Okay, Board, questions? Pat?
Thanks, Carrie. So I know that the confusion is a big part of kind of understanding or not understanding. But I'm wondering, we did have a good number of students respond, and while not perfectly aligned to our population by, broken down by race, it wasn't bad. Like 22.5% of Black respondents and 17% Latino. So we're in the, in the zone. So I'm wondering if you disaggregated the data and if those numbers that suggest comfort or discomfort would be different if we could see the subgroups and how they reported?
So I have to think back to the summer because we did disaggregate it and we did look at it. We looked at the open-ended comments, all of it disaggregated by race and gender. And I, and I do not recall seeing any differences, but I also haven't looked at that, at that level since this past spring when I first presented that to the committee. So I could go back if you, if you need more information.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful because, I mean, maybe you're right, maybe it's exactly aligned with the general number, but I just wonder if our Black students or our female students have different perspectives buried in there. And I realize there's this other confusion that makes, even if there isn't, that, that confusion could have changed the results, but it'd just be interesting to see if there's anything there. Thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, too. Because I think that, that, I'll just speak for myself, that's on my mind, wondering how Black students would, would respond, what their experience is like, what their, if they've had interaction, what that would be. I'm just interested. I'm not even saying or predicting, just wondering what that would be.
Yeah, I can go back and look. I knew we did, the committee talked about it.
Yes.
But I feel like that was a lifetime ago.
I know, yeah.
So I'm happy to go back and revisit that and, and look at that information again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Other questions, Mia?
No, that was, that was mine as well. I just feel like part of the reason why we're considering if there is a presence of an SRO continuing on comes after the wake of our summers and looking at violence on Black bodies. And so I couldn't begin to really, I don't even, you know, make a judgment call or support or step forward without understanding how our students are experiencing the SROs based on identity, specifically looking at race. And even looking at the word cloud, which I thought were interesting, numerically, the majority will have, if they, you know, feel similarly, will dominate that space. And so it was interesting, but it didn't tell me what I believe is really the kernel that started a lot of this dialogue to begin with.
The world keeps changing and events keep happening. And I know we personalize all of that and just wonder, you know, so what if it were our town? So it's just really hard to unpack all of that.
This was a very, very engaged committee, right? And, and probably one of the, I would say, the best committees I've been on that had such a diverse cross-section of engagement from community to partners to, right? And we knew that we were missing the student's voice. And so, which is why, of course, we wanted to get that information and to, to go deeper in, into the data. I do recall that question being lifted, right? We talked about that. And I think there are so many assumptions that can be made behind the responses. You know, what does neutral mean? Like, I don't care, I choose not to answer, you know, we don't know, we don't know. And we don't know who's making the neutral, or you have the information, we can find out. But, so that, that's very interesting to me. We, we also had a conversation around if I'm the group, the targeted group, then I'm not as comfortable and won't be as revealing in completing the survey, right? Even as a parent, I'm not going to bring that trauma into my space. And, and you know, I was this open during the, during the committee. So, so this is no secret that, you know, that I'm expressing this, but I'm not going to invite that unnecessary trauma, right? So I choose not to do the survey. And, and I would say, what some of my colleagues have already said, after receiving the report from EPD, having engagement from the Moran Center that targeted on, that gave us the information we didn't want to hear, you know, and, and some new information, but that targeted a certain group, it would make sense to receive impact or feedback from that group so that we can make the decision that's necessary or completely look at it through an equity lens. And, you know, so I, I think we still have some, some work to do in terms of getting that information, but there are a lot of things that we already know. And, you know, and, and there are a lot of things, if you don't know, there's a lot of information out there to inform, to be informed. And I say that, you know, to my colleagues. So there's information out there, even if you don't have it readily at hand. But I, I do want to thank you all for engaging in this conversation. It was not easy. It hasn't been comfortable. It's probably one of the most uncomfortable conversations to have. And, and I understood that and I respect, you know, you getting uncomfortable as we're starting to try to figure out how to unpack this. So, you know, I want to acknowledge that, but also say that we don't have all the information we need. And, and we need to get a little bit more deeper so that we can clearly make some sort of progress in this decision or towards a decision. Thank you.
We didn't expect to take action or come to any conclusion or decision tonight. We're just, just looking at the survey, the results of the survey, just kind of having this broad discussion. And I just think the information from the survey is really helpful. Even putting, putting it together, which I know the committee spent a lot of time and hours developing these questions, selecting these questions, has really been, that had to be quite a process that in and of itself. So I appreciate that. So it, it does give us some information. And we just have to keep thinking about what are, what are, what are the appropriate next steps for, for us.
So I can go back to the student surveys, since that's really the most robust, robust data, too, and look back at where we were at the end of the school year in May when I shared it with the committee.
Yeah.
I feel like I unpacked some of it, but there's still more to unpack. So let me go back and look what we did and see what more I can disaggregate for you to help inform your decisions.
Okay. Wonderful.
This one was like kind of a big picture across all of the surveys together.
I was just going to add, too, if there was anything else that you can think of that could provide more context and information for you, you know, we'd love to, to get that as well so that we can give you what you need.
Thank you.
My final add was the tremendous work of the committee. You know, leaders were amazing and our staff spent countless hours. I mean, you spoke to it already, but it was really phenomenal. This isn't a committee that meets during the school day, right? This meets in the evening, after school, just inordinate amounts of time, their personal time, because it was such a personal commit and getting vulnerable and exploring racial identity and the relevance to their own experiences and my own experiences and thinking about the SROs as well. And while the three of us are up here, I just wanted to give a shout out to Alex Brown, who is the co-chair. And, you know, one of our teachers, including on Teachers Council, who was a fantastic teacher leader throughout and spent way more time with me when Keith happened to need to be out for a period of time than we ever anticipated organizing all of this. So the commit of our school is pretty impressive.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, other questions, Board? Okay, we'll keep talking. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item. Oh, I guess that's me. Okay. Yes, I'm just going to do a quick update on the superintendent search and just, I haven't had the opportunity to speak publicly about this. We, we've had a process and our Board has selected the Alma Advisory Group to help us engage in the executive search process, and we are really excited about this. This, this group understands the significance of selecting the next superintendent. It is the most important thing that we will do. So we are very serious and, and want to make sure that we carry this out. But we also understand how important it is for the Board to engage in the authentic community engagement process so that we can understand the community's priorities and aspirations for our high, high schools. So we are really looking forward to this process and selected this group pretty much because they are very much about engage, community engagement and just making sure that that approach will happen. So we will, through this process, take time to listen to what the community members, and that includes parents and students and staff, community members, educators, that includes really key, key members of our community. Monique Parsons and I will be working very closely with them and we will work as a Board together. We're going to spend a lot of time together, Board. Get ready. And, and we'll, we, we had hoped to be able to have a survey ready prior to winter break. I'm not sure if that's going to happen. I'm, I just feel like the time is getting away from us, but we will at least have a draft for the Board to review prior to that time. And then in January, we'll be able to, to send a survey and start multiple focus groups and launch, launch communication to all of our stakeholders. So that will happen in probably late January and we'll be able to really look for that feedback. And just as important is sharing the information that we get. So we'll have all the information that we'll share and be able to report findings as we go along. One of my, one thing that I'm really excited about is this group will either develop a website connected that will be linked to our district or they'll develop website connected that will be linked to our district, or they'll develop a process within our district so that community members will be able to go on the website and check our progress. So that's going to be helpful as well. So I just wanted to get that out. Did I leave anything out? I will try to give updates on a regular basis, also at board meetings in addition to the website. So really excited about this. This is going to be good. All right. So the next item, there are a few FOIAs listed. Dr. Beavis, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, yes, we've received, we have two FOIAs from Agnew, one from Cortez, one from Espy, three from Hirsch, one from Irvine, six from Meadows, one for Tortorelli, and one for Wilson, and those responses are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item is comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, how many comments do we have?
Yes, we have 11 comments from the public. And let me just remind everybody, this is our introduction to comments from the public. Speakers who've signed up for public comment will be invited in the order they signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time. I will sign you when there's, I'll do a two minutes left, one minute left, and then I'll fumble with my phone when it goes off. In the event that becomes necessary, I always struggle to turn it off. So just so you know. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak at the lectern up here. I'll make sure that the button is turned on. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individuals are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comments, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. Our first public comment this evening is David Soglan.
Thank you and good evening. My name is David Soglan. I'm an Evanstonian and a pediatrician with an interest in the intersection of health, education, and the impact of trauma and toxic stress on the well-being and development of children and youth. The recent tragic events in our own city and at Oxford High School in Michigan highlights both the very real risk and the psychological impact of violence and the threat of violence. Trauma does not have to be directly experienced to cause negative effects in children. And I know, as Dr. Kinsey reported, that ETHS has our students' mental health and best interests at heart. And while it may seem logical that having police officers in a school would improve safety, there is simply no evidence that school violence is reduced or mitigated by the presence of school resource officers. There is, however, ample evidence regarding the negative impact SROs have on some students, particularly at risk are Black, Latinx, and LGBTQ students, as well as those with disabilities. A recent pediatric article reviewed 29 studies looking at exposure to police and adolescent health. The authors concluded that trivial, that quote, "trivial police contact" or "the fear of contact" may be detrimental to the health of Black youth," end quote. Those most negatively impacted by police in schools are those who've had negative interactions with law enforcement in the past and those who've experienced toxic stress. Childhood toxic stress is a significant risk factor for many negative outcomes, including educational attainment, job performance, mental health, and adult longevity. Toxic stress disrupts neurodevelopment and rewires children's brains, reducing their ability to engage in executive-level functions or control their impulses and behavior, all essential for academic access, success. In fight-or-flight survival mode, commonly triggered in children with high exposure to toxic stress, the brain is physiologically unable to take in new knowledge, problem-solve, or lay down short-term memory.
One minute.
Having police officers at ETHS is undoubtedly reassuring to many students and faculty, especially right now. But we must be guided by facts. The data is clear on three things. First, school violence is not reduced by the presence of armed police officers. Second, police in the building increases the risk that student misbehavior ends in arrest. And third, for some adolescents, especially youth of color, the presence of armed law enforcement is anxiety-provoking and poses significant risk for their long-term well-being. For this group of students, having police in the school decreases their feelings of safety, increases their experience of toxic stress, and disrupts or diminishes their ability to learn. It is this subset of youth who are harmed by the mere presence of SROs in the building, and they are most at risk for getting pulled into the school-to-prison pipeline. ETHS has expressed a sincere desire to become a trauma-informed school with an interest in the mental health of all its students. As an important step in this direction, I encourage you to eliminate the SROs. Thank you.
Time. Thank you. Next up, we have John Kennedy Farrell.
Good evening, board members. As an ETHS teacher and an Evanston parent, 1503 Washington Street, I am writing to ask that as the board composes its five-year goals, it includes specific goals to increase the recruitment and retention of Black licensed educators at ETHS. Study after study, including one completed by the University of North Carolina researchers in 2017, has confirmed what seems to be common sense, that students have a higher level of success in school when they have even one teacher who shares their own racial and/or ethnic identity. Students benefit when they are able to see their own identity mirrored in front of the classroom. However, since the licensed staff at ETHS is currently 68% white, it is much more likely that a white student will benefit from this educational boost than a Black student or Latinx student. Only 17% of licensed educators are Black, 6% Black males, and only 7% of licensed educators are Latinx.
Two.
In addition, as a white educator, I believe that all staff members at ETHS would benefit from a diversity that more closely matches the diversity of our student body. Dr. Witherspoon has said numerous times, and rightly so, that until we have succeeded in correcting the deficits in our system that have disadvantaged Black males, then every year at ETHS should be the year of the Black male. Setting a goal to raise the percentage of Black male licensed educators far past the current 6% would be consistent with this vision, and I think it should actually go much farther than that, considering that many Black students come into ETHS having had only one or, or, or no educators that matched their, their race and identity and gender identity as well. To be clear, a high percentage of non-licensed Black educated professionals have been doing this work in ETHS's doors for a long time and been holding space for young people, been building character and supporting students, but I think that we can do even better. Increased encroachment of licensed Black educators should go hand-in-hand with intentional programs that help retain Black educators and help make sure that the atmosphere at ETHS is one that supports and forms all educators to be actively anti-racist in confronting the systems that promote racial disparity wherever those systems may exist. Thank you very much for your consideration of these thoughts, and please know of my regards for you as you search for a new superintendent and prepare for the next five years. There are big shoes to fill and big goals to set. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to need a little help because my vision's not very good. I think I have Meg, Ella, and Claire, but if you could come up and say your last names into the microphone for the record, that way I'll have it.
Yes, Meg Houseworth.
Ella Ing.
Claire Gover.
Thank you. So it's three minutes total. Okay.
Good evening, District 202 Board. We are three ETHS juniors urging for the removal of the two armed school resource officers on campus. With the recent school shooting in Oxford, Michigan, we acknowledge the emotional closeness of this topic. While school resource officers can provide peace of mind, we believe it is within the best interest of the school well-being that SROs are removed from campus. We believe a majority of in-school altercations can be de-escalated by unarmed safety officers, mental health professionals, and trauma-informed staff who have the better capacity to understand student behavior responses. For a significant portion of our student body, the presence of armed law enforcement can be anxiety-invoking and triggering, especially given the violent history of police brutality within the country. Students may feel peace of mind with SROs, but evidence from the ETHS's Five Essentials data indicates that many students feel significantly less safe in the presence of an armed officer. Quote, "On a scale of 1 to 100, with 100 being the safest and 2, one being the least safe, white students at ETHS average a score of 59 for safety, while Latinx students on average rank their feelings of safety at 49, and Black students at 42." In addition, quote, "Students with individualized education plans average a score of 47 for school safety, while students without IEP scored school safety at 53," quote. On the whole, the SRO's ability to arrest accelerates the school-to-prison pipeline, especially for students of color and students with disabilities. According to the Moran Center, quote, "Black students at ETHS comprise approximately 25% of the school population, but made up 77% of the arrests from January 2017 until December of 2019. Nationwide students with disabilities comprise 12% of the school's populations, but represent 25% of school-based arrests and referrals to law enforcement," end quote.
One minute.
In July of 2020, this board met on the subject of SROs. So we asked you today, on December 13th, 2021, to please consider our revisions in order to create a more racially equitable and restorative school community. We want to make clear that we aren't attacking individuals, but rather the historically punitive system they belong to. The ways in which ETHS is making strides towards more restorative practices, like including alternative interventions to address behavior, should be incorporated in the discussion to remove SROs. We are currently working with four other ETHS students to conduct research about student SRO experience and are more than happy to work aside along you all in this process to reimagine school safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lily Aaron.
Good evening, board admini, sorry, good evening, board members and administration. My name is Lily Aaron, and I'm a senior at ETHS, the hub coordinator of E-Town Sunrise, and I had the privilege of attending COP26 with a program called It's Our Future. I would like to preface, preface my comments tonight by acknowledging that there is no climate justice without racial justice. SROs have absolutely no place at ETHS, and it is the obligation of this board to ensure school safety in a way that honors the well-being of Black and Brown students. The climate crisis is yet another injustice upheld by white supremacy, instituting inequity across the board. To address this injustice, we must equip each and every ETHS student with the resources and knowledge needed to combat the crisis we are set to inherit. We must develop a comprehensive climate curriculum, not just for AP environmental students, but for every student, that delves into the intersectionality of what is at hand. I thank Dr. Beavis for his willingness to create a committee dedicated to climate literacy, and Dr. Campbell for his commitment to Earth Month programming, but we must be going faster. Additionally, ETHS must hire a full-time sustainability coordinator to craft and implement a climate action plan in line with the city's climate action resilience plan. District 65 has committed to hiring one part-time this year and transitioning to a full-time position next year.
Two.
Clearly, they understand the urgency of this issue and that there is no time to waste. Over 60% of young people suffer from climate anxiety due to adult inaction. You are in a unique position to do something about it. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says that in order to prevent the gravest impacts of the climate crisis from being irreversible, we must limit global temperature rise to 1.5 degrees. Coming out of COP, we are on track to reach 2.7 degrees Celsius globally. Although true global climate action may be difficult to push forward, we have the power to act at this level. ETHS, sorry, ETHS cannot continue to hide behind vague mission statements. We must do something now. Dr. Witherspoon, I thank you so much for the decade's worth of commitment to student well-being. As we are already seeing increased tornadoes, floods, food insecurity, and more, I invite you to make true climate action a part of your legacy. Meanwhile, ETHS students will continue to push for more rigorous climate policy.
One minute.
Whether change amounts from this board or not. Again, we ask that you develop a comprehensive climate action plan, the development of climate curriculum, and hire a sustainability coordinator. We ask that you all actively participate in addressing an issue as intergenerational as this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Abdell Shakur.
Hello. My name's Abdell Shakur. I'm a teacher at ETHS, a current chair of the Black Caucus at ETHS. When the great Rodney Low retired in 2018, I became the only Black male English teacher at Evanston Township High School. That matters because I am a part of Rodney Low's legacy, and I know that because he told me so. He actually held the door open for me. He let me know when I was doing good, and that, and he modeled how to show up for students every day. And that mattered a lot because despite being a veteran teacher when I came here, my first couple of years at ETHS were a bumpy ride. New curriculum, new evaluation systems, new parents, new dynamics of race and power. I struggled. And it mattered having an older brother out there looking out for me. And there were other Black teachers. Tish, my mentor, who reminded me that everything glittery ain't gold. Tammy, who visited my class and cheered my practice. DeShana, or Toley, Latay, they all took time to lend me an encouragement and a resource. And of course, it wasn't just Black teachers that supported me.
Two.
But feeling a part of that community gave extra weight to everything that we did. And there were Black folks in different roles, from custodial to safety to admin that helped lighten my load. But that network didn't come from nowhere. The legacy of Black teaching stretches generations at ETHS. Black teachers have been resisting white supremacy, refining our craft, and loving our children the best we can for a long, long time at 1600 Dodge. But, and now, and though there's been progress, the bare fact remains that at a school where 25% of the students are Black, only 17% of the licensed staff is Black. 20% of the students are Latinx, but only 8%, of the licensed staff is Latinx. With all the work we've done around serving Black male students, only 6% of our licensed staff is Black male. And our licensed staff is 68% white. This matters because the research is clear. Students have, who have even one Black male teacher, who have one Black teacher during elementary are more likely to graduate high school and consider college. Having a teacher that reflects your racial identity is affirming and shows that you have a place. I'm here today because, you may not know this, but our Black teaching staff is getting older. A lot of folks been here for a long time, and they're getting ready to retire. They deserve it. And we're not getting the fresh core of teachers to come in to support and rebuild that community. So what I'm asking today is without an intentional vision that cultivates Black teaching and community for our children, all of our children, will lose an essential resource. Our board, you all, has to incorporate the recruitment and retention of teachers of color, particularly Black teachers, in our five-year goals for this to happen. We need it to be accountable. We need a vision that we can all buy into. Because if that won't happen, then I'm not sure who the next Rodney Low will be at this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to need a little help with the signature, but it's Mary, I think it's Ruzinsky, is it Mary R? Is there Mary R? Okay.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak with you today. I am William Royster, and I'm a member of Student Union, but I am not here on their behalf. I'm here as a senior of ETHS with a simple solution to an important problem. I was a facilitator at the Witherbell Forum about a week ago and have been poring through the responses since then. Over and over and over again, the same issue and the same sentiment appeared. Students, oh, sorry, the 85-minute block schedule is simply too long for our students. They're getting bored, they're checking out mentally, and they're losing focus in class. This idea sprung forth in countless different ways and countless different times. Some called for no blocks at all. Numerous students called for 60- or 7-minute blocks. Many wrote 85 minutes, too long, simply and plainly. Students not just, didn't just bring their complaints, they brought solutions. We are not even halfway done collecting our responses and shifting, and sifting through the responses.
Two minutes.
But we have seen dozens, dozens and dozens and dozens of students saying, they would just like simply a block, a break in the middle of their periods. Many teachers throughout ETHS have had the wisdom and the foresight to do this already, giving students a short pause in the lesson plans. I suggest that ETHS mandate this for all of our classes here. The benefit of this is that it gets the, the first advantage of this proposal is that it addresses the issue head-on. Students are growing disengaged more and more with their class periods. After 60 minutes of consecutive writing, work, and note-taking, they're putting their heads on the desk, they're watching the clock, and they're doing- they're watching the clock, and they're doing everything else besides their actual classwork. This is not why we have students in the building at all. By introducing a break, students can refocus, reorganize, and re-energize. Students can enjoy their classes more, but more importantly, it allows teachers to fill their classes with more actual learning, where students are engaged and involved with the lesson plans.
One minute.
Furthermore, this proposal recognizes that every class is different and gives teachers the discretion to place their breaks wherever they like in the class that fits naturally with their lesson plans, so we can keep moving with the class. I believe that if this administration takes the time to listen to these concerns being put forth by students, we can create a much-needed five-minute break for students as soon as they start a second semester. I look forward to hearing your input, and I hope we can make progress together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Bogan.
Hi, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Sarah Bogan. I graduated from E T H S in twenty sixteen, and I am currently a member of Evanston Fight for Black Lives, and I'm here on their behalf. Evanston Fight for Black Lives strongly acknowledges that the system of policing is inherently racist and more often than not harms Black and Brown communities. No matter how kind or patient officers might be as people, they work for a dangerous system that causes fear, mistrust, and anxiety in a place of learning that is supposed to be welcoming for all students. There is no place for SROs in Evanston Township High School. When officers interact with students, they automatically escalate the situation, in part because of their lethal weapon and the power of the law behind them. For example, a fight that could be broken up by E T H S's trained and unarmed safety officers has the potential to become an aggravated battery charge, a felony offense. Alternatives to police in schools require a larger investment in social and emotional learning, transformative and restorative justice, violence prevention programming, more social workers, and better de-escalation intervention training. Police do not solve the behavioral and emotional root of a transgression. If you are looking for a model of effective alternative programming, look to high schools like North Shore Academy and Highland Park that do not use police while having to deal with lots of threats of violence. It is our understanding that Dr. Campbell and Dr. Witherspoon's reasoning for having SROs in the school is for a faster response time in the case of a school shooting or a bomb threat. We argue that officers do not need to be present in the building or interacting with students to be prepared to respond to one of these threats in a timely manner. We encourage the school board to explore alternative models like the one stated above to find ways to protect all students without harming our marginalized communities. I'd also like to encourage the board to include students. Clearly, there are very bright kids who go here currently who could help get better data from the kids who go here now and how they are being impacted by SROs. I would specifically like to hear more from the students who have been harmed by the SROs who work here and who are still here. Yeah, and I'm grateful for the work and the data you did collect, but I think it is imperative for it to be accurate that the students who are taking it know that SROs are not the safety department because that really makes that interpretation confusing. And I'd just also like to point out that the word bubbles, yes, safe was the biggest word, but the second biggest were uncomfortable and anxious. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Dawn Eddy.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Eddy, and I'm from the math department. And I am here to read-- there was a letter that was submitted to you guys, and I was supposed to read it. As a math department, we would like to express our concern about the hiring and retention of Black teachers in our school and in our department. This statement is in response to conversations we have had both across our department and in racial affinity groups. We believe that in order to best serve our diverse student body, it is important that we have Black teachers. There are currently five Black teachers in the math department. The mean and median age of our Black math teachers is approximately fifty, but I'm not fifty yet. Okay, which makes this matter even more urgent because many of them are nearing the end of their teaching careers. We believe the school board must include goals to address the recruitment and retention of Black teachers in its five-year goals. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, members of the math-- E T H S math department and signed by thirty math teachers. Okay, I am also here to represent a smaller subset of the math teachers, the Black Math Teacher Affinity Group.
Two minutes.
Thank you. A quote taken from a Time Magazine article entitled, "Want to Support Black Students? Invest in Black Teachers." The quote says, "If we take seriously the call to reimagine and restructure our schools in ways that recognize the value of Black lives, then a much larger focus on the recruitment and retention of Black teachers is non-negotiable." Our presence is very impactful to many Black students. That is not to say we are the only ones who should educate Black children, but we know our worth and our value to Black students as well as non-Black students. One student reported, "I don't feel like I have to prove that I am worthy or smart to everyone in the room. I just felt as though I could just be my true self, and my teacher saw the best in me." End quote. In the math department, Black teachers are underrepresented, and addressing the issues surrounding representation and retention is long overdue. We have all individually addressed concerns and various issues pertaining to underrepresentation and lack of retention within our department for over the last thirteen years, and we feel that it's time to collectively utilize our voices and energies to engage the school to address the issues.
One minute.
Yeah, the last African-American male hired and tenured was hired in two thousand eight and is currently our only Black math teacher. The last African-American female that was hired and tenured was hired in two thousand and two. So as was stated in the letter from the majority of our department, we would like to have a board goal that addresses the recruitment and retention of Black teachers. We are open to offer dialogue and suggestions to help that happen, and it's imperative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Karlovitz.
Hi, I wasn't sure I was gonna speak, but when I heard the talk about social emotional learning and culture of care, and I didn't hear much about conflict resolution, and so I came to speak. I really don't want the SROs to remain in the schools, and I appreciate the speakers who spoke so eloquently. I guess the one other thing is, the city of Evanston tells me that you guys pay a hundred thousand per year for the SROs. I'm not sure if that's true, but if it is, I would certainly like that to go to social workers. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you to all who spoke. Okay, I'm gonna just keep going here. The next item on the agenda is board committee reports. Are there any board committee reports to share? If not, I have just very quickly. I attended the joint conference in November, November nineteenth through twenty-first, and I served as a school board delegate to vote on resolutions. So I just would encourage-- I know that the board members received this, and anybody interested in the public to look at the twenty-three proposals that the delegate assembly looked at, and lots of information. I'm not gonna go through all of them, it's way too much, but if you're interested, it would be easy to find it on the Illinois Association of School Board website. Okay, so now we're at student board report. Barbara.
Okay, so this month earlier, we had the Witherville Forum, which was a great success, and thank you to all the administrators who were there, especially Dr. Witherspoon. You were there the whole day, so we really do appreciate that, and so do all the students that showed up. We had like about five hundred students in and out the whole day, so a lot of people talking to each other, a lot of notes, a lot of opinions. And Student Union is just working on kind of sifting through those, and we're not close to being done, so I can't really conclude on what opinions and feedback we've gone back from that. But we're trying to decide, like, which of those opinions are like quick fixes, like, that can get fixed within a meeting or two with Dr. Witherspoon and Dr. Campbell, and then things that should be brought to the board, which are more serious and timely. And also regarding the public comments, there were a lot of comments about SROs as well as teachers of color at our school. So I can't really say anything about that yet because we have not gotten through all of those responses, but we have kind of collected a good amount of opinion. And yet again, thank you so much to everybody, all the administrators that showed up, and all the teachers that signed their classes up. It was really great, and I think that, you know, for years to come, the Witherville Forum should be seen as such like a great space for our students, our administrators, our teachers, and just the school as a whole. So that'll be it for today.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
And while I don't have-- I've already given my report, I just want to compliment Barbara, the Student Union, William. The students really organized, but more importantly facilitated a really amazing day. And so you were giving credit to everybody who came and credit to the teachers, but I want-- and I've shared this with you already, the student facilitators, and these around the Student Union were unbelievable. I thought, wow, there are a lot of adults who couldn't facilitate a meeting and conversations that well, with years of experience, so kudos.
Thank you. All right. So we are at the Audit Committee. It's nine-thirty, of course we are, yes. We didn't want you to get used to coming too early. Hello, Kendra. I saw her come in. They're all watching. The whole city.
The way out, I know it. So, good evening, Board. As you can see, Kendra Williams, our Assistant CFO, is here with me tonight. This process has really become her baby, and I was happy to turn it over to her. I'm sure we will mistakenly call this the CAFER. This is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and the governing body changed the name this year to ACFER. Still says the same thing, just two of the words are flip-flopped, so, right. So it's now an ACFER. So we do have--
Do you have the clicker?
Yeah. So we have a little-- we have twenty-seven slides, you don't mind, right? Just kidding, we have like seven. So Kendra's gonna start just kind of summarizing. You have the document as well as the accompanying letters from our auditors in your packet, and a memo from me that shows similar points that Kendra's gonna highlight on some of the slides, so I'll turn it over to her.
All right. So regarding the ACFER, still getting used to that acronym like Mary mentioned, but we did hold our Audit Committee meeting on December sixth to go over the details of it, or the highlights more so, and we were able to just discuss the important information that's held in there. Fortunately, we had a positive audit opinion. We had a positive audit opinion, which is great. No significant deficiencies or material weaknesses were found. And so just to go into that a little bit more, when we say no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, when the auditors come, they're not just considering the financial pieces, right? That when we say we have a million dollars in the bank, that we have a million dollars in the bank, but they're also looking at that in addition to internal controls, right? So if something were to go wrong financially, would the business office be able to identify those weaknesses? Are there any internal control deficiencies, things of that nature? And so they found that we were holding everything down well, thankfully, and they offered-- the only point that they did offer, which is something that they offer to all of their clients, just given the time that we're in now, is to just be mindful as we make advances with technology, just making sure that we are staying up on data security risk because we know that people are constantly trying to do cyber attacks, and we have neighboring districts that have been affected by this. And so they gave tips on what we could be doing to improve. Fortunately, our I A T department has implemented a number of the items that were on their list, and then it just gives us some more things that we can build on for the coming year. So that's the feedback that we received from the auditors, but things were positive, we're happy to say. So as far as finances, there were moderate increases in revenues and expenses this fiscal year in comparison to the previous one. We did complete a one-point-five-million plan transfer, and then there was also an increase in state and federal aid and reductions in some expenditures due to COVID-nineteen. So this allowed for us to have a surplus of four-point-two million. Also, just in considering the different funds, I know that we've gone over these before when we, for example, discussed the budget. So with the general fund, that includes the education fund, TORT fund, and the working cash fund. And so that increased by about three hundred thousand. And I already mentioned that we did that plan transfer to the capital improvement funds. That also considers the transfer to the debt service fund. And so after that transfer that happened, the education fund in particular, which is our largest fund, had a surplus of thirty-five thousand. And then Mary--
Can you go back to that slide? I just wanted to make sure. Oh, right, general fund versus education fund. Okay.
Yes, okay.
So I just, I wanted to make one point on one of the points that Kendra brought out, that when we talk about that one-point-five-million-dollar plan transfer, you might remember that a few, probably three years ago, we talked about the fact that we really needed to address some capital needs, and we're gonna get to some capital info just a little bit on the next slide, but I just wanted to go back a little bit. We discussed with the board a few years ago just needing to really do some capital maintenance to the building and also wanting to be very conservative with issuing debt. And so that's why we started issuing-- so we do bonds every four years, and then in between, we do what's called a debt certificate, which has a much shorter payback. And so as long as the district could afford it, we talked about the plan of not issuing as many bonds as we could, although our debt ceiling is not huge, so it's not like there's a lot of room there to issue debt. But because we had started receiving some additional revenues from the closing of the Washington National TIF, we talked about kind of pledging some of that money towards capital needs as long as the district could afford it. And so that's really what that one-and-a-half-million dollars is about. A good portion of that nine hundred thousand goes into the capital fund directly as a funding source. When we come to you in the fall and talk about the funding sources for capital, that's the nine hundred thousand dollars that we show on that funding schedule. And then the other six hundred thousand does go to pay for our debt certificates, so. So on the subject of debt, because we're subject to debt ceilings, like I said, I think the district has tried to be pretty conservative in using long-term debt as a tool. You can go out up to twenty years, which is fine when you're building an improvement that's probably gonna last between thirty and fifty. But I'm really proud of the fact that we've been able to really shorten that payback schedule in a lot of cases. And so this year, again, as we did last year, the district reduced long-term debt by almost two-point-six million in debt service and then other liabilities like I M R F, which we don't really control the I M R F and T R S liabilities that the state, really the governing bodies make us list on our financials. But I think it's still an accomplishment that we really have reduced those numbers in the last couple of years. And I think that's important, especially because our capital needs always outpace the availability of the funds here. Our depreciation this year was something like three-point-eight million. And so really, if you think about it as an accountant, you want to try to keep up with what, how your assets and your building improvements are depreciating. But the truth is, it's difficult for this district to afford three-point-eight to four-million dollars in capital improvements every year. We've done a good job, but that's partly because of the third bullet here, which is how we've been transferring money from excess in the educational fund, or in this case, it was actually working cash, which is part of general fund. And then in twenty-twenty-one, we transferred that one-point-five million that we were just talking about. So we have been able to transfer some money, which has really allowed us to do closer to maybe five million a year in capital projects. And that seems like a lot, but I'll tell you, this summer, we're about to do the second phase of the window project in East School on Dodge, really just first, second, third floor. That's it, front of the building. And the second half of the girls locker room. Those two projects, just the half that we're doing this summer, is about two-point-four to two-point-five million dollars. So really, if we didn't do these other kind of creative-- So really, if we didn't do these other kind of creative savings and kind of keeping our money available for capital, we'd only be able to do like those two projects in a year, and those are big projects. So that would be tough to do anything else that's really needed in the building, not to mention tuck pointing and roofs and things that are super important to keeping the building going, so. Just want to kind of give you that background on debt and capital. I think we have one more slide on capital.
Yeah, I feel like the capital and debt all got some.
Yeah, I kind of just went off topic a little bit, but they are sometimes related because we use debt to finance the capital. So as I mentioned, we have a large, had a large amount of capital spending in this budget, I mean this ACFIR, as we have in the past few years. The projects finished between July of 2020 and June of 2021 included the boys' locker room, which was another giant one-in-two phases, and the outdoor track resurfacing, which turned out beautifully, but as you know, everything's expensive these days. And the projects that we just finished included the literacy lab, which was 100% funded by the ETHS Foundation, thankfully, the auditorium upgrades, which was another 2 million multi-year project, and we really just scratched the surface. We could have done a lot more in the auditorium due to its size and age. And I don't know if you've noticed, but our band tower is now in place as of last week, December eighth, they came and installed that thing. We've, we were told, I think it would probably be in April. So that was a classic example of how everything just got kicked down the road because of supply shortages for COVID. That's another project that was fully paid for by the foundation. It's at the corner of Lake and Dodge, so if you haven't seen it, don't go see it now, it's dark, but it's pretty cool and very safe. So I feel like a broken record sometimes because I feel like I talk to you about a lot of the same things at budget time and financial time. So just wanted to remind you that we still don't fully understand the recovery period of the pandemic, at least financially, and in many other ways, of course. The good thing is, we had some revenue streams that were pretty positive. We didn't know how some things like the corporate property replacement tax would be affected. We were pleasantly surprised that that was actually over budget, and it's completely out of our control. Haven't heard anything in a while about property tax, of property tax freeze, but we know that's always a possibility. There is some new legislation that's just coming about to help districts recoup the money that can be lost during property tax appeals, so I'll have some more information for you that really soon, about that really soon. I think that it could be a positive flow to the district as early as, I think it's probably gonna be fall of '22, so I don't think it will be in this budget year, because the spring property tax payments are really a percentage of a previous year. So, and then the last thing is the continued unknowns of TRS and the amount, the amount we could be required to contribute towards pensions in the future. I think that's it.
Yep. Any questions?
That's it.
I'd like to say something to kind of frame this. First of all, to both of you, Mary and Kendra, to your whole department, and to all of the people in the district who have responsibilities for budgeting their areas and administering their budgets, I really want to give an extra shout-out. I can tell you, as you saw, we ended this year with the best audit we could have wanted. If we had written it ourselves, it would not have been a better audit, and believe me, we would have written it well. But, you know, every year, we try so hard, and we do have a good audit every year. We've had one now for, I can attest to, sixteen years in a row. But as Mary and I were sitting in on our last audit that we will do here, it was really extra special to really hear from the auditors that it was a completely clean audit, and that we really are in a very sound financial position. I think it's especially important, when Mary mentions, that we've even transferred the last couple of years' money into the capital improvement projects, because we just simply can't raise enough revenue to do all the structural things that this building needs. But what's so important about that, we're not only keeping a good budget, keeping good financial records, doing things properly in the way that they need to be done, but we're also not mortgaging the future. We know that this building needs a lot of special care, and instead of just kind of putting things off for somebody else to address in future years, we're actually investing more money into the structural and capital improvements in this building, so that this beautiful building will be maintained the way it needs to be maintained for decades to come. So to you, to, and it's a team effort, there are a lot of people with budget responsibilities, and they all have to keep their area within budget, and to all of you, it's really rewarding for me to see that on the sixteenth and final audit that I sat in on and had responsibility for, we continued to get the kind of feedback that we got. So, thank you both.
Thank you. And I think just to expand on that real quickly, Eric, I do think that without the open conversations about trying to use some of those transfers in a creative way from working cash, from, you know, some of that Washington National TIF money, I think that we would really have had to ask you to choose between redoing the boys', girls', locker rooms, and auditorium, and keeping, you know, replacing roofs and doing the major masonry projects that we did on the front of the school with the windows. And windows might seem kind of silly sometimes, but when you look at some of the windows that are in some of the wings of the building that are, you know, they're fifty years old, and they literally leak, and they leak onto carpets, and they leak into hallways, and so unfortunately, well fortunately, we didn't have to choose between those things, but I do think that if it were not for this kind of process of using money as long as we could afford to use it and the board being agreeable to that, I think we would have chosen between projects that we really needed and projects that we not only needed but really wanted to do. And so thank you for allowing us the flexibility to kind of build that into the plans and present that to you.
And thank you for the foresight to be able to say to us, you know, here's some, here's some creative suggestions, here's looking ahead into the future, and this is what we need, and coming down the pike, and really just really, just getting ahead of it all and staying ahead of it all. So I agree with Dr. Witherspoon. I think your department has been superb in making sure that even with those threats, and you said you sound like a broken record, every time I see that list or think about those threats, you know, I just wonder, so is this gonna be the year? Is this gonna, is it gonna happen with the pension this year? I don't, we don't know, and I feel like we've really been able to dodge a lot of bullets because we've just been thinking so much about what could happen, planning for that, and that's, you know, I give you so much, you and your department, so many kudos for that, so thank you. And I see that financial report and all those awards that, you know, we've actually kind of come to take for granted, you know, we still get these amazing awards that are just not given to most districts and, you know, very high honors. So thank you. It's clear, you've done some amazing work.
And they don't just give us a pass because you've gotten it before. Kendra has to work for those awards every year and reprove herself, so. But we were really happy at how smooth this audit went, and I've been happy to be able to step away for the last few years, and I think we have a good rhythm going on it.
Great. Other questions, board? All right, thank you. Thank you again, both of you. All right, so we are at action items. The first item is acceptance of fiscal 2021 audit report. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Did you get that, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Andy? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. The next item is adoption of 2021 LEVI.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. The next item is the resolution declaring the intention to issue not to exceed six million dollars.
One zero.
A lot of zeros, I know. Six million dollars working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the district's working cash fund and directing that notice of such intention to be published in a manner provided by the law.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. The next item is approval of the Alma Advisory Group contract.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. The next item is approval of Board of Education Code of Conduct and Board Agreements.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. The next item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from November sixth, 2021, special meeting, November sixth, did I say twenty-sixth? November sixth, 2021, closed session meeting, November eighth, 2021, regular meeting, November eighth, 2021, closed session meeting, November sixteenth, 2021, special meeting, November sixteenth, 2021, closed session meeting, December first, 2021, special meeting, and December first, closed session meeting. Also, approval of bills, treasurer's report from October 2021, and personnel agenda, which consists of appointments to staff, support staff operations, change in status, stipends, leave of absence, maternity certified, resignation, safety, and other, and support staff MOU. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, next item is old and new business. Does anybody have anything you'd like to bring up? All right, closing polling of the board. I'll just say that I was able to get to Yamo, and I saw Liz there, and it was really amazing, very talented group of students, so fun. It's really a great way to spend an evening. And I think one more weekend, right? This coming weekend.
Yes, you're going Friday.
You're going Friday? Okay, good. You'll love it. Anything else?
Well, I, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, since it's a little ways off for them, but I just wish all of our students and our wonderful staff a really well-deserved winter break. I hope everyone really unplugs and enjoys themselves, because I know it's lots going on, and it's been challenging, and we don't get a lot of chance to say thank you and take care to all of you, but I think this is a good time for you to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Happy holidays to all of you. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. A second.
I was really tired. What happened? Give it to somebody else for a change.
I was waiting.
In the spirit of the holidays.
All in favor.
I'm sympathizing with William's comments about an eighty-five-minute locked schedule right now. William, you have no idea how long it can go on.
All in favor? Aye. Polls? Motion carries. Thank you. It's ten o'clock.